And the other would be maybe take a look at what other EDAs are doing. I know for myself, as just a private citizen, it's hard to find information about our TCEDA on the website. I've gone to meetings and I have asked that the minutes be published on the website like other public agencies, but to my knowledge, that still has not happened. Also, the work plans, though they have measurable outcomes, based on how I define measurability, I haven't found them to be very exact. It doesn't always tie back. If it says, "I'm going to visit 50 businesses," is that a month or a year? And what's the outcome? What are we going to get from that? That's never been in any of the work plans that I've seen. And as far as a summary at the end of the year, that would be nice to know, out of everything that's been spent, where are we? You know, where are we in terms of these good things that are happening? I hear a lot of good things that have happened just in this meeting, but there's no specifics. So just take, if you would, a little bit deeper dive, and again, I do thank you for taking the time. You're all very busy, so for you to voluntarily do this, I appreciate it. You've just added a little bit of work for yourselves, but thanks. Well, I can save you $15,000 because I sat here in this room when you voted to give $5,000 as seed money to the Sonora Area Foundation so that the public could traffic stock. And as far as I can find out so far, you haven't gotten a dime. And then I sat here, what, a couple of weeks ago, when you decided to vote $10,000 to do branding. Well, I don't, I opposed that then, I oppose that now, and that's the $15,000. And I think Larry Cope and Economic Development Agency are a better investment of our $15,000 or my $15,000 than the way you've stupidly done it up till now. Thank you.
Anyone else like to come up and speak to the council?
My name is Ms. Harry Olms, and thank you for the opportunity to speak here. And want to compliment Larry, he's one of the first persons I met in the city. He was kind enough to give me some direction, so I'm positive. I will go ahead and add my background, my systems analysis. If you could consider other things that the agency is doing, and Larry's helpful, as a qualitative, the United States has been spoken to tonight, that are doing maybe a quarterly report. And a quantitative aside would help you better understand where you are with this agency. Thank you very much. Okay?
Thank you. Well, I don't see anyone else standing, waiting to come to the podium, so I will bring it back to the council. Additional discussion, questions, or a motion?
I guess if it's okay, I'll start it off. You know, I love to play devil's advocate, and I believe that's part of the reason why the public has us up here, is that no matter what, we need to question everything we're doing. I spent a lot of time in this pack this weekend and asking a lot of questions. I remember, and Larry and Supervisor Handbell, I know you'll remember this too, when the Central Sierra Economic Development Authority first got taken over, and Larry came in, and the newspaper reported it correctly with everything that was going on. It was a mess. I mean, millions of dollars in the mess, and it's something that probably should be revisited to look at everything. One thing I can say is Larry came in, no, he didn't come in on a cape, he offered lots of suggestions to the board at the time, gave us lots of different direction that we could go, and saved the counties, the member counties, not just Tuolumne County, but City of Sonora and others, lots and lots and lots of money, and kept the state off our back, if I remember correctly. It's been years now, but it was well worth it at the time, and it was a great investment then. That's one of those lessons that I learned, being on that board at the time, working with Larry, working with Supervisor Handbell, that I take with me. So I play devil's advocate because I never want to be that board member that is walking blindly. I want to make sure that I'm up to date, I know my information. Like I said, Larry, you're doing a great job, a great job, and I get the whole idea of investment, and I look forward to voting on this.
Okay.
I'm rather torn between staff saying, well, one, this is not an either/or proposition. We will be, even at staff's recommendation, funding this at the current level. It's not that it's going to go to zero if we were to choose to stay with the current funding per staff recommendation. We invest what we, or at least in my life, and I'm sort of a primitive up here, I invest what I have in excess beyond what I need for means, and if we don't have the money to pony up the additional $15,000 roughly, then it has to come from somewhere, and my question is, where do we get that? Because the opinion is obviously very compelling and almost overwhelming in the public contribution to our discussion, but where do we get that? Because I am nearly persuaded that we ought to, I just want to know where it comes from.
Madam Mayor, if I can just make a brief comment. When the city originally participated in the JPA, the money came from the redevelopment agency funds. In 2012, the redevelopment agencies were dissolved by the state, and the funds now come from the general fund, which means what we contribute to the TCEDA comes out of the same funds that fund all our other departments, programs, and services. So while the amount is small, although it's grown over the years, it will be taken away from other departments, programs, and services. So it's a question of, is this a priority over the police department, or the fire department, or any other department? We do have reserves, but it is not wise to use reserves for ongoing expenses. So we're looking at what our revenues are. We've already explained to you there is a deficit projected for next year, and we'll probably end the year with a deficit. So to balance our budget, it'll have to come from somewhere else.
Thank you.
Yes, anything to your business?
Well, one thing that Supervisor Brennan brought up that I have a concern about is the JPA itself and the agreement itself, and as to whether it breaks the agreement if we don't hit the right percentages and all that. So, and I don't know, I asked Newby. I know, exactly. For those of you in the audience that don't know, she's our Assistant City Attorney, and so she's not quite as up as Doug might be, or even, so, and she's stepping in tonight, probably last minute is that, probably. So I would be concerned about whether or not filling, not spending the extra $15,000 jeopardizes some agreement and that. I don't have, I mean, everyone talks about how great Larry is and is. I mean, that's not the, you know, it's not, certainly not my concern, the concern is not money, not the job that Larry's doing. I think it's going to be hard for us down the road to tell our own employees and the morale of our own employees, if we approve an increase, what does that say to the other folks when we have to decrease a status quo budget for our own folks? So I have concerns about that. I've kind of wavered all throughout this meeting. I mean, you know, it's, this is a very tough decision. $15,000 in a grand scheme of things, you think is not a lot even for our budget, but it's a precedent center as well. So probably the best suggestion is what Carol said. I mean, you know how I felt about the branding. So, you know, there's $10,000 right there, but, you know, I don't know what to say, to be honest with you right now. I mean, you know, actually, one more thing. It was brought up that the TCEDA Board did vote for 7-0 for this budget. Well, of course, you know, that makes sense because they were living in what they wanted to do for the TCEDA. You know, I'm not sure that our representatives really knew that where we were with the budget, our own budget, the city's own budget at that time. That might have tempered some discussion in those, that board meeting. And it may have, it may have been the same for the county, I don't know. That's there, that's them. But, so, that's where I'm at.
Mr. Segarene?
Well, you're correct about the vote for the economic development budget at that time. I did not vote the status of things at that point. I don't know if the mayor did at that point either, but I might have voted at that time as well for the TCEDA. That's my worst status here. Well, you know, over the years, I've been through a lot of economic development efforts here in Tuolumne County, going back 25, 30 years at this point. This has been the most successful of all the entities that we have gone through. A lot of that has to do with Larry, but a lot of it has to do with the commitment of the business community, also seeing the value of return on investment, not just an investment into economic development, but the return on economic investment. I believe Larry, if asked, you know, what has been done in regards to that investment returns in the City of Sonora, could rattle a lot. He already has talked about a couple of the major ones that have covered that investment. And I believe that the continuing efforts for economic development will bring to the city as well as the county that return on investment that I would look for. As you mentioned, the big scheme of things, $50,000 is an overload in regards to our budget. And I think that the $15,000 can be well covered through that return on investment and continuing to endorse and be the commitment that the city has made. I do believe the JPA, the way it's written, as I understand it, if we did not contribute to it, then we're not fulfilling our obligation, and they would not be able to have these counts.
At a different level than, no, I don't think this question is that we're going to contribute, some, you know, but you mean at the specific level?
Yeah. So, Madam Mayor, I think that the investment, the return on investment is more than I could hope for in regards to actions of the economic development authority. I've been on that board for quite a while. We see a lot of what's going on, the general public death of seeds, and that those efforts, in my opinion, are a nice return on investment. So I would actually, I was also torn in regards to our budget and what that means to the city, hoping that while I'm making Larry commit to that $15,000 addition, we'll see that return on investment within a year's time. I'm not going to hold it.
Okay. What I want to say is that I've been on the TCEDA, but I'm only since July of last year. This is not about Larry, and I hope you all realize that. That is, Larry, the first time I ever met Larry, and I was a sales rep for many years, I said if I ever had a sales organization, he's the guy that I would hire to be my sales manager, because Larry has those qualities. This is 100% from my perspective about the budget, and several people have said that they feel our pain, especially the county. I'm wondering, before I say that, two of the council members sit on the TCEDA Board. We hear things that the three other council members never hear, or tidbits, because there's a lot of things we can't even talk about to another council member based upon what might come to us here because of the Brown Act. But when we approved that budget, which was a TCEDA budget, my concern was, can we afford the extra almost $16,000? And the only way we know that is to come back to our financial people here and say, what is our budget going to look like for the next year? And furthermore, for the next five years? Because this is not the last time that there'll be an increase in the TCEDA budget, probably. I mean, that's reality. So I'm wondering if there's a way that possibly we could wait, we, the council, could wait on a final decision until we know, until we're further into our budget based upon negotiations that we're getting ready to go through with employees? And also, I think it would be very interesting to the council members to have Larry come back at another council meeting and show us what the city has gotten as far as a return on our investment within the City of Sonora. And we know that everything that happens in the county and the city is a positive for both the city and the county. We understand that. But it might be of value for our council members that don't get to sit in the meetings of the TCEDA to hear that. And then I think it's really important to do with the JPA agreement that, from our legal counsel, that we, all of us on the council, understand that if we don't vote to increase our investment into the TCEDA, what kind of ramifications those are. And I don't think we have an answer, all of us don't have an answer, especially the council members that aren't on the board. So that's a recommendation to the council, if you, to take into consideration.
Madam Mayor, how long do you anticipate that process will take?
Well, we need to go back to staff and ask that question.
Larry has a deadline in June, I think it's June to adopt their budget.
Yeah, well, our budget has to be, well, we go to a public hearing on the budget, so we need your information by the second meeting, or the second week in March. Or, sorry, second week in May, sorry, wrong month. Second week of May is when the board will have their public hearing, or has traditionally had their public hearing. Doesn't mean we can't move that date, but the problem is, is if we're to cost control, we need to start that cost control now, which will be elimination of stuff, which we will have, we have a list of the stuff that we would have to eliminate, and that ranges anything from offices, to staff, to contributions, to things like Vision Sonora, SBDCs, all that stuff has to be wrapped up. I can't be doing that in June. So that's why we've always had our hearing, if at all possible, in May.
So with all that, so our schedule is to bring to you the second meeting in June, the first meeting on our proposed budget, on our draft budget. Not the second meeting in June, the second meeting in May with an adoption in June. Second meeting in May is the 15th of May. And I'm sure by that time, we could get legal counsel to offer an opinion about the contribution. I would suggest that the adoption of a draft budget by the board that's considered by each of the respective agencies, the whole point of bringing it here is to get your concurrence on it, but it doesn't mean you have to accept it. Otherwise, there's no, there's no, you don't exercise any control over what your contribution is. I mean, if the seven members of the board said we wanted $3 million, and that was split between the city and the county, it would not be reasonable to expect that if you didn't agree to pay your million dollars, or whatever it was, that the JP would be dissolved. I mean, it just, but we can get an opinion as to how that affects the agreement by that same, by that same meeting. So, on the 15th.
And what is the date of your public hearing, Larry?
Let me grab that for you. And I also have your numbers that you were asking about on the other area. So our May meeting would be May 12th, is our public hearing.
Okay, so if we did this on the 15th?
What time is it?
I'm sorry?
It's after your hearing.
Right. Okay, is there any way we can do this on May 1st? Can we call a special meeting on May the 8th?
No, having it done by the 15th.
And just so to go back to your numbers, those numbers I gave you earlier about return on investment is the $10 million, $10 million and 312 jobs, that's just for the city. The entire county, return on investment on, again, projects numbers that were given, those projects that have been completed over the last eight years is $126,778,000 in city and county, with $10 million of those being done in the city. These were the same numbers that I presented to the board supervisors using estimates provided by the companies of projected additional return on investment if all of the projects come in. Again, I put that caveat in there because they make business decisions sometimes that we don't have any control over. The $61 million that I said could be future projects, that is just part of $350 million worth of projects countywide. So that's your return on the investment future, and then your return on your investment that you already have contributed to over the last eight years. So, a lot of the numbers that we were able to get from companies are our estimates, and they have asked us to aggregate those into a larger number because those are private to those companies. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yes.
Is there any reason that we wouldn't want to just approve the current level of funding right now and have that written in stone already, and then consider the additional almost $16,000 when we have, for more information? Because we can at least say, yes, we're on board and care for the additional, we need more information.
That is an option. I don't think there was ever a, not funding what we currently funded, but that's up to the council.
The agenda item is to approve the 2018 TCEDA budget. So I would do that.
The council has the option at this point to make a motion to approve the current amount. And at that point, we'd have to talk with staff to figure out how that's going to impact their own budget, but it sounds like it's going to have a significant impact on when they have their public meeting in May. But if the council's desire is to provide the current level of funding, then it can be made through a motion.
I have a question about that. So if we do go ahead and do that, and there is some ramification with the JPA, does the fact that we voted to not go at the prescribed level affect that JPA at this point?
It's hard to tell without evaluating the actual terms of the JPA.
See, that's why I'm thinking maybe we'd better do evaluate the JPA before we do any action.
Again, well, at this point, if there is, I would say maybe that a short timeframe in terms of the motion tonight, and if we are able to wrap everything up for the second meeting in May, and at that point, maybe the council can then make another motion for the supplemental difference in funding. Again, we'd have to figure out that with staff, to figure out if that will work for their budgeting purposes in their own meetings. At this point, if the council feels comfortable at least doing that, that is an option. But again, it's hard to tell without actually evaluating the agreement.
Do you think you could?
Can the evaluation?
So the other option, just in tandem with Newby, is we can get an opinion from the attorney by your next meeting, which is the first, have the item back on the calendar for consideration, and list what your options may be at that point, whether it's approve the budget as proposed, approve it at a current level with a future consideration when we go to hearing on our budget, or some other option we haven't thought about tonight.
Well, Madam Mayor, it's important to me that the city continue to partner with the county in regards to economic development, so I would look forward to that decision.
I think that's probably the first crucial decision.
So the meeting of motion continues to the meeting of papers.
Need a motion?
I move, I move to continue this budget discussion of the, what's the name?
Tuolumne County Economic Development.
Tuolumne County Economic Development Agency budget request to the next meeting.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? Comments? Any other public comment?
The only comment is actually more, the question is that we have a requirement to have our public hearing within, I believe it has 10-day notice requirement, so we need to make sure that works with the calendar of when you guys are going to be voting on it, because we also, being a public agency, have to follow through on it. Also, I also bring up consideration for the county, since they're going through the budget process at the same time, they will need to know whether or not to, so they need that in their budget process. So I just ask for those two considerations for two other governmental agencies.
Will there be enough, as of May the 1st, would there will be enough time for a 10-day
I actually do not know that without talking to Union Democrat staff, because I know everything has to be done here, sent to Oregon, and then comes back, so I don't know. I'll have to check. I will not know until tomorrow morning.
All right. Bring it back to the council, based upon the motion, and call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Segarene, and Mr. Plummer, and Ms. Williams, all voted yes.
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm really not.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim.
So let's do a vote.
Okay.
Mr. Hawkins?
I'm going to vote no. I think we should vote on this tonight.
Mr. Plummer? Mayor Williams? Mr. Segarene?
No.
And Mr. Dearborn?
All right. We'll move on to item number two, consideration to authorize the filing of an urban greening grant in conjunction with the Tuolumne County Transportation Council to improve Stockton
I'll begin by making an introductory comment. We've received information from the TCTC, Tuolumne County Transportation Council, regarding an opportunities to file a grant under the urban greening.
Let's see if we can quiet things down because we can't hear. Let's see if we can quiet things down because we can't hear.
An opportunity to file a grant under the urban greening grant of the, of the Natural Resources Agency. Council members who serve on that committee are aware of the opportunity. We've been apprised of the opportunity from Darren Grossi, from the executive director of the TCTC. He's provided a letter in your packet describing the program and, and the process in response to a couple of the questions that were raised, and their staff would accept the offer for the TCTC to prepare the grant for the city. As far as the lead agency, when the, when the grant's awarded, I'm not sure whether it's best to have them administer that part or the city would. So, I think that's an issue that we would work out as a part of our joint efforts in, in submitting the application. So, with that, I'd turn it over to Darren to describe the program and the opportunity. It's on a very short timeline. The grant's got to be in by the end of the month. So, we would, with your direction, we would be planning a meeting as soon as possible to frame out the, the application and get the program started.
And it looks like we have Mr. Grossi here this evening, so we'll let you go ahead and give us comments.
Thank you, Mayor Williams and City Council. Good to be here before you tonight. We've heard a lot of talk about economic development tonight and partnerships. Vision Sonora was certainly a project that was developed in response to the economic recession to provide a vision for Sonora to make it not only a more livable community, but a place where businesses might want to invest. We've certainly seen some investment in the Stockton Road corridor, both in terms of public funding. We have about a $1.2 million transit stop improvement there. We've seen the Bourbon Barrel make some investments. The Save Mart Shopping Center has also rehabilitated shopping center. Then we just heard tonight about Maurice's going in at the Bertelli Drugs and perhaps doing some improvements down there. This is an opportunity potentially for us to make investments similarly on your public infrastructure out there. As you know, the Vision Sonora Plan does envision a beautified corridor there with landscaping, walkways, a trail, bicycle lanes, safer crosswalks, where we've had some fatalities at the crosswalks, as well as, again, like I said, landscaping. One of the visions or objectives of this grant is to reduce carbon emissions. By doing that, by planting trees, you do sequester and store carbon. Also, the walkways and the bike lanes provide an opportunity to reduce vehicle miles traveled by automobiles, also improving air quality. You have spent the resources to get cost estimates on some of the improvements, and I passed out not only the staff memo that went out, but also some graphics that were created for the corridor, showing some of the many's I talked about, as well as the costs. It's presently about a $4.3 million project. Certainly, I would look towards a project steering committee to help us maybe rein in some of those costs to make it a more competitive project, perhaps changing the scope of the project just a little bit. There is about $78 million that's administered by the Natural Resources Agency. We reached out to the Natural Resources Agency with a one-page summary of our project concept. They felt it fit the program, or they did note that we would be in the, they did note 75% of the funds available need to go to disadvantaged communities, which we do not meet their current criteria. We'd be in that last 25% funding category. The idea here is that the Transportation Council has authorized staff to put together the grant application or work with the city to put together a grant application. It's kind of the, I believe the feeling of the council was that, you know, this is, while it's long odds to get the funding, we would certainly think it's worthwhile effort in, in making this effort. It's a priority for the, this Vision Sonora groups, as well as for the Transportation Council. And if you would vote tonight in support of moving this project forward, we'd certainly work with the steering committee to put together the application. It needs to be submitted by May 1st. It's a lot of work to be done in that short amount of time. Alex has already dove into the grant. A lot of detailed questions, over 100 detailed questions that we need to work on and get answers to, and we certainly need some staff support of your staff. So, with that, I encourage you to direct your staff to help us put this application together.
Okay. Question, questions by the council for Mr. Grossi?
I see impavement lighted crosswalks down by the fairgrounds.
Yes.
Excellent. I just want to make sure I get that correct. Are there any other lighted crosswalks along?
There's a second crosswalk, I believe, that Bradford proposed.
Okay.
Now, in doing that, I think we're going to have to partner with Caltrans, and all of those things would be considered by Caltrans. I do not assume that they have automatically accepted those proposed improvements.
I just have to throw something out there. I received a call a little while back about the traffic and the danger, and they said, hey, I've been to, I forgot what city it was, and they had the lighted crosswalks, and I hit the brakes. I didn't realize what was going on. So, that's one of those things that I think could really work out for us, especially down there, especially at night, especially for big events.
Totally agree. We do have one lighted crosswalk, if people haven't seen them, down at Jamestown Elementary School. Works great.
Okay, other questions? Mr. Plummer?
How much staff time is expected to be required for this?
I'm envisioning Alex spending the better part of the next two weeks on it, probably upwards of 80% of the next two weeks' time on it. We may need some additional, we need to do an initial study, and we're hoping that maybe the city planner could help us with that. That's a, you know, a little bit of time, maybe five, 10 hours. I would imagine Tim might have a better feel for that. We may even need to reach out to Kim Lee Horn that did some of the cost estimates. If we come up with a little bit different scope of work for the project on revising those costs, cost estimates, I'd probably absorb that in my budget.
And right now, you say we're in the 25% that's kind of at the, the tail end of the any funding cycles or any funding?
That's correct.
One, one more question, if I may. Will any private property have to be purchased, or is this all?
We think we can get this all done within the existing right-of-way. That one of the things we need to do in preparation of the grant is to research what the property lines are, to delineate if there would be some need for additional right-of-way, but in this case, we have a very wide roadbed for the most part. And this would be what we sometimes call a road diet. Instead of having such wide curb-to-curb, which you narrow the curb up to start fitting in some of the plantings and the walkways and things, all within the existing right-of-way, narrowing the effective width of the curb-to-curb, which oftentimes has its own traffic calming benefits.
That's what my next question was going to be. Do, will we see, what's the likelihood we'll see reduced speed along that area? That's another call I received.
Well, I think anybody who's been in the traffic business a long time knows that when you have a narrower road, you tend to have slower speeds. So, I think it's safe to say we see some reduction in speeds. Also, if you have more planting, that gives more of a, a narrower feeling to things. You start having what I call friction factors. You see a downtown Sonora on Washington Street where it's very narrow with the, with the cars parked there along, people will slow down automatically down to less than 20 miles per hour, but as soon as they're coming northbound and it begins to widen out a little bit by City Hall, they hit the gas and they're picking up their speeds.
Okay.
Okay, questions?
Comments?
Okay, thank you. I will open it up for a public comment then.
My name is Elena Lynnahan, and I'd like to speak against the urban greening grant project. The project you're opposing tonight is premature. The project, this project, the project in this proposal will be detrimental to businesses along Stockton Road, impacting access to their businesses and removing parking. Added, and the added traffic congestion will cause, oops, the added traffic congestion that will be caused by this project will increase the very greenhouse gas emissions that the grant funders seek to avoid. The concept proposal states this Stockton Road is unnecessarily wide without giving any justification or support for that statement. What studies have there been? What expert opinion can you quote? Businesses and property owners whose livelihood will be affected by this grant were not notified. No announcement was made in the Union Democrat. There was none on MyMotherload.com nor in KVML. The agenda was announced on Good Friday before holiday weekend. It's a sneaky way to take action without garnering public input. This is especially sad because you've had business owners that have appeared before this council in the past to express their opposition to Vision, Vision Sonora proposals on Stockton Road. You owe it to them to include them in your discussion. The same thing happened when the city approved the grant application for the Red Church intersection. I asked this body if the businesses had been notified of the grant application and the proposed design. I was assured they were. When I asked the business owners after the council had voted, they told me that they were unaware of the proposal and that they, that all they had received was a flyer dropped off at their business announcing a meeting. No information or details had been shared, not even the information that the proposed grant would impact the entrance to their businesses and property. The city has got to do better at including others in the conversation, telling us that Vision Sonora, that the Vision Sonora Committee meets in the middle of the day and the Transportation Council meets on workday afternoons does not cut it. I'm continually discouraged by the piecemeal approach that the city has taken to the Vision Sonora projects. Vision Sonora needs to be examined as a whole and determined, a whole, to determine what is worthy of public funds and what would benefit our community instead of damaging it. We're repeatedly told that a group of 150 like-minded people gathered to develop the Vision Sonora plan, and I repeatedly remind you that 400 citizens signed a petition presented to you in opposition to Vision Sonora. There is no need to rush to meet this grant's May 1st deadline. This is the fourth year of an annual grant program. Wait for the next cycle and make sure that you have a project that everyone can support. Tim Miller likes to tell us that Vision Sonora is an economic development program instead of a landscaping project. How can this be true when the business owners speak against the project? This should not be thrust on the Stockton Road business owners. And how is this proposal fair to the California National Resource Agency that's funding this grant? Their stated goal is to reduce building energy by strategically planting trees to shade the buildings. I've looked at Stockton Road, and I haven't found a building that would benefit from an energy reduction due to the tree planting. Can anyone on the council identify one of them for me? Can the city manager? Can the city engineer? Public Works Department? Another goal that is stated in the grant is that by planting trees, air carbons will be stored and sequestered. Next time you're standing on Stockton Road, please look around and see the huge amount of trees and foliage growing in the area. To submit to the state that these additional trees, these tree plantings, will impact greenhouse gases is proposed. The grant requires you to show a net greenhouse gas benefit, and because of the dense foliage along Stockton Road, you can't. And I hope you'll include that fact in your grant application. And while you're at it, please be certain to tell the funders that the increased traffic congestion caused by the proposed project will increase the greenhouse gas impact on Sonora. They deserve to know that when they decide who to fund. I'll give a written, a written copy of my comments to the city clerks who include in the minutes of the meeting, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay.
My name is Jim Davis. I've been up here several times before on the Stockton Road problem. That's what I call it. Vision Sonora, the money that has been spent, we've got nothing so far that I can see that has been done. The last time I was up here, I told you of the impact, that it was going to be on my business down there with pulling wrecks in and out of the shop at Stan and Jim's Body Shop there on Stockton Road. And putting bulb-outs, planting trees up and down there to curtail the greenhouse gases, that's like me going down at Maloney's and throwing a bucket of water in there and saying the drought is over. This is, as far as I'm concerned, BS. It's a ploy to get Vision Sonora funded for the $4 million to get this project done. It is not needed at all. I have been down on that creek since 1965, pounding out fenders and getting along just fine. And if anybody knows Stockton Road, I know it. I see the traffic. I remember when the bypass came in and how it helped Stockton Road. They used to back up past the fairgrounds on Fridays coming into town, and I couldn't even get a car off the deck to get in line because nobody was courteous enough. Now, what we're going to do here, what you're talking about doing, is putting all these bulb-outs in these trees. You know, I get, I have trees behind the building that throw in oak leaves on top of the roof all the time, and every year, I've got to get up there with a ladder, which I'm not too good on a ladder anymore, and clean out the gutters because the office gets flooded and over by the air compressor gets flooded because of the leaves. And I think it's a real beauty to Sonora to be able to drive past the creek, the Sonora Creek, and look at the beauty of the water. The other day, I was down at Antioch. I came home, what did I want to look at? The creek to see how much it has rose underneath the buildings, and it had really rose. It was a bad day for rain. We had a cloud burst, and I enjoyed looking at the creek. If that creek would have been covered or hampered in any way, as far as being able to look at the creek for the beauty of the creek, you're losing it on that. If you go to Sutter Creek, you cross the bridge there, what do you look at? You look up the street to see what the creek's doing. You look down the street. You go to the antique shops, you hang your head over the bridge and you take a good look. The last time I was here, I hate to have to put your city engineer on the spot, but if anybody can be trusted with the good jobs that he's done with traffic control in Sonora and what he did out at the end of South Washington Street and also in front of Gus's Steakhouse, he needs to be commended. He knows what he's talking about. And the last time I was here, Jerry was about to retire, and Jerry said he was asked what was his opinion of going along and working out Stockton Road. He said, you're not going to like what I have to say, but I'm about ready to retire. You're going to congest the traffic coming into town, which it would, and I know it will. Everybody's going to be looking at the trees and gaping at stuff and not at the creek. And we're talking about $4 million to work on that creek. We've got a bridge. As far as I'm concerned, that thing, that road, the way it is right now without spending a nickel is just fine. Eric didn't come tonight. He didn't pick up his award that he got. I know he's upset. I've talked to him about where he parks his cars. I know this Vision Sonora, what they're going to do to parking along Stockton Street with putting bulb-outs and trees in there. It's going to hurt the parking, and I'm worried big time about getting wrecks in and out of my building down there. And I think before you vote on this thing here, filing with the urban green grant, that is a joke. It's just a ploy, and I think you should leave Stockton Street alone, and I think you should set Jerry down and talk to him and get his views over again and understand what he's going to tell you, because I have full faith and he isn't going to turn tail on me because I heard him, what he said a year, year and a half ago. Jerry Patel is a man to ask about what you're going to do down there. I trust him thoroughly, and I know he's going to do a good job up there on Greenlee Road. I trust him thoroughly and I know he's going to do a good job up there on Greenlee Road. He's a good traffic engineer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura Lehman, I wasn't going to get up, but boy, I have to say, I would encourage you to go forward with this. I've never heard anybody say that they thought it was a bad idea to plant trees in this world. We can look at the creek, but there's buildings like right on the creek, so I don't know. It was all kind of confusing, but I would really encourage you to go forward with this. And the fact that the, this agency has offered to help you do 99% of the work is a wonderful thing and we should take advantage of that.
Thank you.
Can I have one more?
Nope. Um, one, one, uh, everybody gets one opportunity. Okay, uh, because I gave you an opportunity, I have to give everybody else another opportunity. So it just lengthens out the process. And there'll be other opportunities to speak at a later date. Uh, so if there's no one else that is going to address the council, I'll bring it back to the council for, um, additional discussion questions or a motion.
Go ahead, Jim.
Oh, there's a couple, a question, a couple of questions I had on the, the conceptual plan by Kim Lee Horn for Darren. And I believe, Darren, you said it was estimated that this conceptual plan was $4 million and some, some million dollars. Are we expecting that kind of money coming, to come back in a grant? Are we expecting lower returns on a grant or do you know?
It's certainly within the realm of possibilities that we could ask for the full $4.3 million. Now, keep in mind, this is walkways all the way down almost to the old lighting shop or the new gym. We may want to rein that in a little bit, not quite go so far and phase the project in. We may want to look at the pedestrian bridge over the creek. There's a number of things that I would suggest we should look at as ways of phasing the overall project in and keeping the cost a little lower. But that's a fine line between reducing facilities and still getting a good cost benefit analysis out of their, uh, they have emissions calculations that you do. Uh, and the more of the facilities you build, the more you get in terms of benefit from carbon reduction. So we're going to have to just, I'm hoping that we can meet tomorrow. Uh, we have something on the calendar with the assumption that the council might support this to give very clear direction on what the scope of work would look like and we'll just move forward at that point. So that cost is the maximum, I think, that we would ask for. We can ask for the whole amount, but it's likely to at least go down some.
And the reason I ask that is, you know, if we aren't getting, if we aren't going to get the full four, four million or whatever, I, there are parts of this plan that I'm really concerned about, and that's the, the north side of, of Stockton Road, basically from, from where the Dragon Gold or Woods Creek comes down across is the light, so-called light crosswalk there, on down toward Jamestown that way. We've had several incidents there, including fatalities for people crossing there and having a proper sidewalk on the front of the Gold Lodge and along through there. I think that should be a priority in the plan, in any kind of planning that we do. You know, Vision Sonora is, is controversial to some. And, um, but I do, I do feel that we need to, uh, build some facilities, basic facilities on some places where there aren't any at all. And I think that's where we should be focusing this grant certainly, especially if it's not going to pay for the entire, what's in concept here. Um, if we continue to go down that road of, of the full concept, then, then, you know, we can do that with grant funding down the line. But I, I'm more concerned about revamping existing, uh, under, under, what's the proper word? Under, um, not up to code facilities, narrow sidewalks that don't meet ADA compliance, or new facilities that would, would benefit people rather than, um, existing facilities. That's kind of where I'm at. But, uh, but in, in general, I'm supportive of, of the funding of the grant application.
Well, I'm certainly in favor of it, but I don't know that we can piece meal a project like that, just three sections or a ton, so that works. Darren, I want to ask you, with your experience in following county and roads and travel here, do you think a project like this could be dead for mount to Stockton Road?
No, I think it would be very beneficial to Stockton Road. Stockton Road has about 7,000 cars a day. It's nowhere near the level of traffic we have on Washington Street, which is around 18,000 cars a day. It's, so it's around 7, 8,000 cars a day, uh, in a very, very wide road bed. You should be able to fit that on a much narrower road section and still have everything flow very nicely. I don't think, I think we have more capacity there than, but what's needed in terms of vehicle capacity. What we lack is the pedestrian bicycle capacity.
Okay, questions over here, Mr. Plummer?
I don't want to keep you standing all night, but thank you. There were several references to bulbouts on it. I don't see any on the conceptual plans. Is that, are they not planned for any parts of Stockton Road or am I just missing them? Because my, my understanding was that was just for Washington Street potentially.
That's my understanding as well. This is, again, is a conceptual design. It's a narrowing, you know, in that shoulder area that's so wide, you'd narrow it in, most likely to create the curb and the gutter and the, the planning areas and perhaps wider sidewalks. But I don't see any bulbouts per se.
And is, is this conceptual plan then the one that we would most likely have something awfully close to? Or is it just blue sky and what we'll end up with is something that would likely be dramatically different?
Uh, I would not expect it to be dramatically different. But I would expect that if we were fortunate enough to receive funding, we would be hiring an engineering firm. Uh, we would do much greater public outreach to get input on the ultimate design that would be put out to bid at some point. Certainly you'd want to engage all your business owners at that point in time to make sure that whatever their needs are are being addressed to the maximum extent possible. Obviously in a short timeframe, we don't have that luxury. We have what I would consider a refined concept.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, can I address what Mark was saying? I, I think the bulbout portion, it's not technically a bulbout, but I think the portion, if you look on sheet number four, you'll see out in front of Eric's shop, which is McCoy Tires, and then in front of Quickway and, and along there on the north side of Stockton Street, the, where the existing sidewalk and edge of the road is now would be pushed farther into the roadway quite a bit. And so that's probably what's being referred to as the bulbout. And goes all the way up to Bradford. And I'm not sure if, let me look, I'm not sure if it keeps on going up in front of Foster Brothers or not. But that's, I think that's what's being referred to as the bulbout. Plus, there's also a spot right in front of, behind Sonora Inn where the roadway end is there. There's, there's a pushout right there across from where Calvin Realty used to be.
Yeah, I think, I'd agree with Jim that we've got general narrowing of the roadway or narrowing the distance of pedestrian has to cross the roadway. Uh, it's not the, the typical bulbout where you just bring the, the curb radius out like we have planned out Washington. So I think you're exactly right, Jim.
Yeah, I think that's what is being referred to for that.
Mr. Hawkins?
Yes, I have more questions. So I guess in addressing this gentleman's concern about the body shop, he said he felt that he may have issues bringing cars in and out. Um, I'm seeing it here on the edge. I see that the existing parking spaces are going to be left intact. Is that correct?
That's the way I understand it, yeah.
Okay. Um, I mean, I, I had a constituent call me Friday, I think, no, Friday, Saturday. And I gave my word, I would really dig in deep with this. Me personally, I like this, but I represent my constituents. So I, uh, talked to several people, um, in Virginia that have a lot more experience with this. When I left Virginia 20 years ago, um, they were starting their greenway process. And again, a lot of people against it, some land was purchased, what have you, doesn't matter. One of the biggest things they noticed was that the small mom and pop eateries where you could lock your bike up out front or you could just walk there within a half a mile to three miles away started getting more business. And I know having a family, you know, four children, I, I walk everywhere. You'll see me everywhere in this town. So, um, that's one of my biggest complaints. I try to stay off of Stockton, the skinny sidewalk, having a six-year-old daughter that likes to take off after squirrels and birds. Um, I could see where this could be more beneficial. I could see during, um, fair, during the fair, after the fair's over with, people, you know, walking up to downtown. Um, I can see some benefits in this. I can also see the concerns. Please don't, you know, make a mistake that I'm not seeing the concerns of not being able to run the business, uh, businesses along Stockton Road correctly or anything like that. So, um, I genuinely like it. I see the safety features. I see speed typically slowing down. But again, it's 7,000 cars a day versus Washington Street, that's what, 18,000? So I, I, I see both sides. I, I will ask, what will the, um, multi-use trail will be made, made out of? What's the idea that will be?
Well, I don't know that we've got that refined, but some of the earlier versions had a, uh, compacted granite, natural surface was the thinking.
Okay. Did you?
Yeah. Decomposed granite.
How long, what, what's the surface life? How long does it last? I, I want to make sure, and the reason I'm asking is because, again, this is tax money, taxpayer money, and I'm, like I said, I like to play devil's advocate a lot, so that's why I'm asking all this. You said compacted granite, so is it coming? I, I don't, I don't know this stuff, so that's why I'm asking.
Again, I think these are design details that really you should have more of an expert than myself to discuss with you and decide what the right treatment is ultimately. But what I've seen is they, uh, in some areas that do this kind of green belt treatment, they will put kind of a curb in, embedded in the surface, so to speak, and then they'll put a special dirt surface decomposed granite, oftentimes with some sort of treatment so that there's no dust and it stays very compacted, is rolled and is compacted. That does, uh, how long you, before you'd have to occasionally go in there and kind of smooth it out and repack it, I'm just not familiar with that.
Okay.
I don't know. It's meant to be low maintenance, but natural.
Okay, that's where I was getting at, so thank you.
I think the idea, I should say, is the idea is to expose the concrete more to, uh, people that might want to walk back and forth. Right now, if you walk on that side of the road to look at the creek and the beauty of it, there's virtually nowhere in places for you to walk safely through that area.
It's not with a six-year-old, there's definitely not.
Yeah.
So what I'd like to say, um, is first of all, um, this word piecemeal keeps coming up. The, the Vision Sonora Plan, the only way that it's going to be implemented is project by project based upon grant dollars that might be available. So I just want the general public to understand this. And additionally, I'd like to say that the Vision Sonora Community Plan was put together by the, those members of the community that were interested and participated. Each and every project that we will, that, that we get funded, there will be more public input about what the final outcome and design will be for the project. And, uh, just because you see a pretty picture in a, in a, um, project book doesn't mean that that's the way that it's going to look. Back in 2013, when this plan was adopted by the council and there was a dollar sign on this project of $4.3 million, that was in 2013. Based upon everything that's on this list as far as a construction estimate, these pr, these prices could have gone up by now. But what I want to, want to say is that, um, we can look at what is included in this construction cost estimate. There are things that could probably be taken out so that we could call the plan down and come up with a pedestrian walkway between downtown Sonora to the fairgrounds and possibly beyond that would make it a safe route for those to walk and travel and have people from the fairground area come back up into Sonora. So I think the, I would suggest that the first step be, number one, that I would be for, um, having the Twalome County Transportation Council, um, staff helping our city staff put this grant together. We don't even know if we'll get the money. And, and the only way you find out if you're going to get it is to apply for it, number one. Number two is that we need to look at what the concept was, what the, um, uh, pieces of this design was, and then come back and say, well, these are the things we'd really like to get done, like a walkway, lighting so it would be safer, uh, maybe trees, um, possibly, um, other vegetation. But, um, come up with, um, uh, exactly what it is that we'd like to accomplish the first time around to see if we can get the money to do anything. So, um, and then, uh, if we do, then there'll be more public input as far as a design, that engineering and design that would take place, uh, at a later date. But the first step is, is, is getting the money to begin with. So, um, on that note, are there?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Any other public comment? Then I'll bring it back to the council for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Pass this unit. Oh, uh, sorry.
Representing my constituents, no.
Okay, we have, uh, four, um, council members voting yes, one council member voting no. The council member is, um, council member Plummer. Okay, we'll move on to item number three, consideration to adopt resolution number four dash 17 dash 2017 dash B, accepting a dedication of public road right of way from Sonora Community Hospital for widening Greenlee Road. Mr.?
Council members, I'll try to make this quick. I, we-
Oh, that's all right. You got, we got all the time in the world.
It's a very simple thing.
Hold on one second, I gotta-
I'm, I'm going to have to change tapes in about 10 minutes.
Okay.
So if you want to take a break now before starting this, I'll be about five minutes or when you go on the floor.
Then I would say that let's take a five-minute break and you can change the tape now. Is that what you want to do? Okay. Do you mind, uh, Jerry?
Not a problem.
Okay, five-minute break. So we'll go ahead and I'm gonna, uh, and Mr. Pacillo is going to give us a report.
Okay, this is a resolution, uh, accepting a dedication of public road right of way for the widening of, uh, Greenlee Road from Sonora Community Hospital. Uh, this is a normal form that we use for where it's a developer improvement and they're giving a right of way and doing improvements along their frontage. Uh, and, uh, you'll see the, uh, the document is called irrevocable perpetual offer to dedicate. And, uh, it, uh, it basically is an offer to dedicate their property for public use as a public road and a public utilities. That's all, all it is. It's a, it's a very simple format. Uh, they have a legal description, which is like a meets and bounds of it, that describes it, uh, and then an exhibit that basically shows, uh, the right of way that we are getting from, uh, Sonora Community Hospital, uh, as part of the, the Cancer Center project. And, uh, the area of the dedication- And the area of the dedication is 8,531 square feet, and they have actually partially improved this area with the widening of Greenlee Road and as well as the sidewalk. If you go out there, you'll see that the sidewalk kind of dead ends to where the gas station is going to be taken out. And I think they've done a good job, they're very cooperative with providing this dedication. And so, our resolution is basically just a resolution accepting it, and then we, once we accept it, we accept it into our city maintained street system. And then it becomes basically a public right-of-way. It's very similar to acquiring a partial fee title. This is the way we do it for roads. And it's very similar to an acquisition, but it's a simpler process. So, I recommend you adopt the resolution.
Okay. Any questions by council members?
Jerry, just out here, how far up does the city road responsibility go from that end of this project up Greenlee Road?
Goes up about 500 feet, technically. And there's, it goes up to where the city limit line goes across Greenlee Road, basically the back of the Old Andes property on it. Practically, we do maintain as far as Greenlee Road up to our desigland. Last time we did the paving project there, we paved from mono way up and to the far side of the desigland, and we did that intersection. And that, the desigland is a city street, and that's the practical area of maintenance that we have.
Any other questions by council members, comments? Any public comment? Then I'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'd like to move on resolution 04-17-2017-B.
Any other questions? Any other public comment? Then I'll bring it back to the council for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Passed as unanimously. Item number four, consideration to adopt a budget transfer policy.
Hi, good evening. I think mine will be fairly procedural tonight. This is a budget transfer policy, which we talked about at the mid-year budget update, and I mentioned we'd come back to the council with this. It's really just a cleanup to kind of formalize what the process has kind of been most of the time in the past, I guess. We did take this to the finance committee, I think last Thursday, the 13th, and it was approved and recommended to bring forward. What we're basically saying is that if we want to transfer money between accounts, for instance, overtime is over budget, but there's salary savings that will offset that, we want to give the departments the authority and ability to do that, we will come back to the council if it's an appropriation of new funds. So, if the police department, or the fire department, or admin needs more money to get through the year, we would come back to council. And the idea is that this will give some control to the departments to say, work within the means the council has given you. So, if there's different priorities that come up, and it doesn't violate what the council has set as your priorities, work within that money to get your job done. So, again, this is just a formal process, to formalize the process. If you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Questions by the council? Okay. Any public comment? Then I'll bring it back to the council for a motion.
I move we approve the budget transfer policy.
Any other questions or comments? Any other public comment? Then I'll bring it back to the council for a vote. All in favor? Aye. Passed as unanimously. Item number five, consideration to establish a working group to review and recommend measures for local implementation of the Adult Use of Marijuana Act and the Medical Marijuana Regulation and Safety Act. Staff report.
Yes, madam, mayor, members of the council. The city attorney and I were charged with coming back with a recommendation for a working group formation. We're suggesting a five-member committee, not unlike the Topeka County Supervisors had set up. It would include two council members, one public member, one industry member, and one public safety member, which could be either police or fire. In terms of appointments to the committee, I've included your council handbook that discusses the process for standing committees and commissions and outside government assignments that provides for the mayor to make those appointments. Requires application, appointment by the mayor, confirmation by council. I'm not sure the working group falls within that category, so I've included the handbook sections that are relevant. Since it's a single-purpose committee for a limited duration, but you still may want to accept applications in particular for the public and industry members, or the councils could, council members could each come back with their individual recommendation, and you collectively could make a selection. So, the challenge is that you, well, first, we would ask that you concur with the recommendation for the committee formation, or amended as you might see fit, and then discuss amongst yourselves your council member appointees, and then the, how you want to select the public member and industry member, so.
And could you be a little bit more, give a little bit more information as to what a public member is and what an industry member is?
Industry member would be a member of the marijuana industry that's promoting, well, I don't speak for them, but promoting dispensaries, cultivation, or other activities associated with the new legislation. And a public member is simply that, a member of the community within the city of Sonora to serve as a public member of the committee.
All right. Other questions for staff by the council? Before we open it for, well, first of all, we'll have public comment on the makeup of the committee first.
Sure.
Is there any public comment on the makeup of the committee, which is two council members, one public member, one industry member, and one public safety member, could be either police or fire, for a total of five members of the working group?
And that's a member of staff.
Pardon me?
And that's a public safety member, is that one member of our staff?
Yes.
Please clarify. So, public comment on the makeup of the working group? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council then. And this evening, we are, we're going to establish the working group to review and recommend measures. So, are we going to be selecting who these members are this evening?
I've described what, I've described two processes. One is what's prescribed in your council handbook as how you treat your selections for your other committees. They're all by application if they're members that are outside of the council or of the staff, and they're done by mayor appointment. The handbook is not on point with regard to this kind of a committee, so I've described an alternate process for you. So, I guess you might want to first decide how you want to go about making your selections. Are you going to use the handbook provisions and have the mayor make those appointments, or does the council as a group want to be involved? And I think you have the flexibility to, and the city attorney concurs, the flexibility to do it in either fashion. And at that point, then you've got to make some decisions about whether you want to take applications, if you use the second alternative, or say, well, each of you go back and talk to your constituents and come back with a recommendation for a public member and an industry member, and from that group of five that you would each recommend, then make a collective decision. So, you've got a lot of flexibility in how you want to go about it.
So, it looks like there were three suggestions here. We can either do, we can either do it first. The process would require an application, and appointment would be by the mayor and confirmation by the council.
That's correct. And that would be for the public member and the industry member. I mean, you're not going to ask your colleagues to submit an application, and the staff you And the second alternative is, go ahead.
That each council person could nominate an individual with full council making the final selection?
Or, again, take applications in that process as well.
Conversation, opinions by the council.
I think, I think applications are essential. I think it should be posted, and people should be able to, anyone can put their application as long as they meet the requirements. One has to be an industry member, one has to live in the city, public member has to live in the city, rather than us finding somebody and pointing them. I think it should be open. And depending on, depending on who on the council may want to be on the committee, and if it's all five, you may end up just drawing straws to see who gets, who gets picked, I guess. Unless you default to the handbook rules where the mayor exercises the discretion for the appointment.
Mr. Garaventa, your opinion?
I concur with Jim, with the public process. And I would suggest that the mayor, you'd be one of the, at least one of the people represented by the city council.
Okay.
You can hear him.
Mr. Plummer, your opinion?
Yes.
Yes, whatever?
I think I would agree. I think just if you operate the, the large public type positions, if you are interested in the, probably the best approach would be to operate.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree, the application process, I think, should be followed.
All right. Then it sounds like the consensus of the council is that the public member and the industry member apply through the application process? And as far as council members, maybe the...
I'm willing.
Mr. Garaventa is willing, and Mr. Hawkins is willing.
And the mayor, I suggest that you, while we discuss, you probably have a different knowledge and techniques and workshops and things, and therefore, that's the initial suggestion.
I would be happy to do this, and I think it's very important. And the other, even though both Matt and Jim have said that they would participate, I think that, I'm going to make a suggestion that it be council member Hawkins, only because council member Hawkins has children, little children. And I know that sounds strange, probably, but he may have a different perspective than those of us who have older children. So, that's just, that's just, that's just one opinion. You guys can have another opinion.
I'm just assuming that since Matt volunteered, that he does have the time to...
Oh, yeah, I definitely have the time.
And then, as far as the public safety member, my opinion would be that it should be the police department, so they're, since they're the ones that have to enforce the law. And I know the fire department, it's very important based upon some of the things that you're running to, but I think the police department is the entity that can be involved in helping us.
Yeah, and just to be clear, the staff support would include whatever the committee needs with respect to planning help on zoning issues and legal help from the city attorney's office and other help from administration, so, as well as input from police and fire from the public safety standpoint, whether they're on the committee or not, so.
These are open meetings.
They're open meetings. Yep, yep.
I'd like to add one more thing, because just in case something happens with council member Hawkins...
Should have an alternate.
I'd like to have, I'd like to suggest we have an alternate, the council member Garaventa. And then we're always covered throughout all of these meetings.
Okay. So, just to recap then, the consensus of the council is the council members would be the mayor and council member Hawkins with Garaventa as an alternate. The public safety member would be the police department representative, and we will post and solicit applications for the industry and public member. Good, we got that done in less than 10 minutes. So, when it comes to the police department member, how is that determined? I'll let them decide from their administrative staff. But I expect it'll be either the chief or the lieutenant.
All right, we'll move on to monthly reports, which were in our packet. Okay, is the Vision Sonora Committee report. There is no report this evening because the April 13 meeting of the Vision Sonora Committee was canceled. The next meeting is May the 11th at 9:00 a.m. here at City Hall. Item L is communications, which this evening we have none. So, we'll move on to council member and department head reports. So, I'm going to start with interim chief Harden, please, to start off.
The only report I have, mayor, is tomorrow morning at 9 o'clock is Coffee with a Cop, our first in what hopes to be a planned series of events for, an opportunity for members of the community to come and meet the police department without an agenda and just talk about issues of concern, and to look for items in areas of mutual trust and respect, and to grow the communication in the community. So, it's tomorrow at 9 o'clock, 9 to 10, at Union Hill Coffee.
Which is right across the street from the Superior Court Building.
That's correct. On Washington Street. Thank you.
Is the whole force, is the entire force going to be there tomorrow?
Depending upon any calls for service, I'll be in attendance, as well as the lieutenant and hopefully the officer on duty, absolutely.
Okay.
So, you have law on one side and order on the other?
Yeah, you're right. Law on one side and order on the other.
Yeah, exactly, and chaos in between.
Ms. Calloway, anything from your department more?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Chief New, anything from your department?
Can you pick her first so she can roll up there first?
Oh, of course, I'll be happy to. Ms. Callag, anything from the community services department?
Actually, I think I get up here quicker than anybody.
Yes, you do. I think we all need one of those.
Yeah, no, you don't. It gets old really fast. I won't let you know, Spring Festival's coming up. So, it's on the 29th, downtown from 11:00 to 4:00, as with every year. If the weather's nice, there'll be a lot of people down, and there'll be a big crowd. If the weather, if we have rain, or if it's misty, it will be a lesser crowd. But we're hoping for a good year and a good crowd, and I wouldn't let you guys know. So, hopefully you guys all come down.
Thank you. And now, Chief New, the fire department. And now, Chief New, the Fire Department.
So I wanted her to announce the Spring Festival. I wanted to let you know that the Fire Department, we're conducting volunteer and intern firefighter testing this Saturday. We have a total of nine applications, so we're hoping for a good turnout for tests. We have one vacant intern position, and we have six vacant volunteer positions, so we're hoping that we can fill those. Also, on the twenty-ninth, coming up for Spring Festival, the Snore Fire Department and historical volunteer companies will be cooking tri-tip sandwiches, as they have historically done in the past. And we will be showcasing throughout the day when the crew, on-duty crews are not on a call. We did receive as part of the Office of Traffic and Safety Grant that was applied for, through the county, a combination extrication tool. It's valued probably just under ten thousand dollars. We were successful in getting that grant, and a big thank you to the county. Chief Paul Avila was spearheading that grant process and was able to get a lot of extrication equipment for a majority of the Fire Departments and districts here in the county, and we were a recipient of a combination tool. So it, instead of having two large tools, one for cutting open a car and one for spreading doors and different compartments in a vehicle if someone's entrapped, this is a smaller, lighter-weight tool that does both. So, and it runs on battery power, instead of having to hook it up to a generator and run it with hydraulic hoses. So it's very versatile, compact, and portable, which is great. So we will have that on hand throughout the day for people to see and showcase that as well, so. Look forward to seeing you guys there.
Okay. And congratulations on that. Okay. Mr. Paciello, anything from your department?
I guess, at the next meet, it's my thirty-eighth year anniversary, being a (inaudible) city engineer, my first year was the first year in nineteen seventy-nine.
Wow, thirty-eight years. Thank you for your service. Mayor Jane?
Hey, Nubia.
Okay. Nubia, anything from the Attorney's Office?
Nothing.
Okay, Mr. Mailer?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Garaventa?
Mr. Segreini?
Mr. Hawkins?
Jerry, I just want to let you know nineteen seventy-nine was a great year. That's when I was going to... Just want to make that very clear, it's a great year. But, Madam Mayor, thank you very much for appointing me to that committee. I will do my best, and that's part of the reason I want to serve on the committee is due to my children. So thank you very much. I will do my best.
And Mr. Plummer?
Nothing, thank you.
I have two things. One is, I want to commend the Union Democrat for the article and the wonderful picture on the Caulfield Park beautification. So please pass on to Giuseppe, what a nice article that was, and for the general public to go by and at least look at what is happening in Courthouse Park from Washington Street or Green Street right now, Caulfield Park, from Washington Street or Green Street.
From the safety of nine of the barricades.
Behind the barricades at the moment. It will be reopened. And then the other thing I'd like to ask staff to do is, since we're going to put out a announcement in the newspaper for the marijuana work group, could we also at the same time do the expired term on the TCTC cap?
I'm doing those on the Parking and Traffic Commission.
Okay. And the same thing with the Parking and Traffic Commission? Perfect. All right. And that's all that I have for this evening, so we will adjourn this meeting at eight fifteen,